Okay, thank you all. Welcome, everybody, this morning to our full-day work session. And we hope to be able to keep ourselves on schedule as best we can. And in general today, we will be inviting staff to do their presentation. Please take careful notes. And we would like to not take school board questions until staff has gone through their entire presentation. We hope that that would be more efficient. So with that, Dr. Braebrand, would you like to introduce our first section?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Strauss. We have our annual ERFC report. I'm proud to have Eli Martinez here, our executive director. Eli is now in his, really, heading into his third year, right, leading, second year leading ERFC and is doing an outstanding job. We typically have this in July, but we were so busy in July, we weren't able to get the report in. And here it's September, so we're giving you this update now. And take it away, Eli. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Braebrand, thank you for that warm welcome. As Dr. Braebrand mentioned, my name is Eli Martinez. I'm the executive director and chief investment officer at ERFC. Just as an introduction, I'll be walking you through the four key points of the presentation. We'll talk about the history of the plan, highlights on the membership. We'll talk about the key financials, including performance and costs. And then I'll update you on a key initiative that we've undertaken that is helping us really spread the word on ERFC that I think will help you in your recruitment and retention efforts. I'll summarize, then we'll open up for questions.
And just, school board members, this is for information only. There is no action required on our part, just so that we are framing that. So this is a report. There's no more money needed. So it is basically an update and a report. With that, thank you.
Thank you. You beat me to the punch. So yes, information purposes only. The other thing I would mention is that this presentation only covers ERFC, so we're not going to be touching on VRS. That's a completely separate plan. The other thing that you might be wondering just right off the bat, your contribution rates, the cost of the plan are going to stay flat. So there's not going to be any changes through fiscal, at the end of fiscal year 2021. So with that, let's get started. I mentioned the four key takeaways, and these are the things that I want you to remember at the entire presentation. The first thing is that the least expensive plan, the 2001 Tier Two Plan, it's the newest plan that you adopted in 2017. It's the only plan that's open to new members, and it's the only plan that's growing. It's the least expensive to FCPS. The other thing that I wanted to mention as well is that our performance has been pretty stellar. Over the last 15 years, we've averaged seven and a half percent. That's after fees, which is better than most of our peers. In addition, we remain well-funded at 74%. The members' benefits are safe, and our costs are continuing to be competitive versus our peers. So all good news. What about the history of the plan? I think I mentioned early that I was going to walk you through the highlights of this. Some of you might be very familiar with this already, so I'll try to be brief. As some of you might know, in 1973, the school board worked in collaboration with FEA, established ERFC as a vehicle to help your employees and essentially to help you align your interest with the interests of the employees and retaining them for a full 25-year career, helping them retire at an early age of 55, and also supporting a high quality of life here in Fairfax County. The plan started as a 25-years-of-service plan, retiring at age 55. In 2001, you established the 2001 Tier One Plan, and that plan changed the retirement age or the retirement age from 55 to any age with 30 years of service. So now employees had to work five years more. And then in 2017, you changed the retirement plan to the 2001 Tier Two Plan, closing the previous plan. And this one changed the retirement requirements from any age and 30 to the rule of 90, which was their service credit and their age have to add up to 90. So that brings us through 46 years of service. And now let's look at why a defined benefit plan. Well, some of you might know this, but there's a lot of reasons why you don't want to just have a defined contribution plan. Defined contribution plan is otherwise known as a self-directed plan. Some examples of this are 401Ks in the private sector. You don't have a 401K. You have a 43B and a 457A. And so both of those plans are similar to 401Ks, and this is what this refers to. So there's a recent study by Aon that looked at retirement readiness that showed that if employees are left to their own devices, and this was the only option that they had to choose from, not only one of three employees would be able to have enough money to retire on time. That means that they were, the two out of three employees that didn't save enough money would take a 20% standard of living cut. I want to say that thanks to the foresight, I would say, of this board and with the help and the leadership of Dr. Braebrand and the leadership staff, that FCPS has given a lot more to employees in terms of options. You'll never have this situation because not only are they able to access defined contribution plans, but they also have access to a guaranteed financial future in VRS and ERFC. So who pays for the benefits? And so this slide shows us the member contributions. Looking at that purple slice first, 14% of the cost, the total cost that it takes to fund ERFC comes from member contributions. Now, this is not saying that we're deducting 14% out of members' paychecks. This is saying that if you take the 3% that comes out of members' paychecks on a monthly basis, you aggregate it, that equates 14% of the total cost that it takes to fund ERFC. In a similar fashion, looking at the employer contributions in green, FCPS contributes 28% of what it takes to fund the benefit. That means that for every dollar that an employee puts in, FCPS puts in $2 approximately. And then that begs sort of the question, the lion's share, as you can see in blue, comes from investment, growth, and earnings. These are activities from the, yes?
I know we're supposed to wait, but I think this is important clarification here on this one particular slide. You gave the distinction that employees give 3% monthly out of their paychecks, but then you just talked about FCPS doing 50, you know, two times that. So could you just be clear what monthly we're giving to employees? Is it 6% then?
You're currently, that's a good question. You're currently paying 6.44% of payroll on a monthly basis. So that if you accumulate that for every employee, that gives you the 28% over the course of the year. Okay? Great, thank you for that. So looking at the blue bar again, that's where the majority of the cost payment comes from. It comes from the investment, growth, and earnings that the ERFC Board of Trustees and the work that they do on an ongoing basis. So that's going to be a really important point on a go-forward basis as we look at the rest of these slides. So what about FCPS retirement plans? I think that one of the things you might be curious about is what our plan memberships look like. What you're seeing now on the screen is the number of retirements out of, number one on the left-hand side, the legacy plan, which started in 1973 and enclosed in 2001. And in green, you're showing the number of retirees, and blue, you're seeing the number of employees that are still actively working for FCPS in that plan. Now, our forecast shows that within the next 10 years, those employees will be fully retired. Importantly, looking at 2001 Tier One, which is the next bar chart over, that plan started in 2001, ended in 2017, or at least closed in 2017. As you can see, the majority of your membership in this plan is still actively employed and working for FCPS. You have a small sliver at the top in green that are retired. That's somewhat of an anomaly. These are individuals who came to work for FCPS late in their careers, or maybe career switchers. And then lastly, that last bar, the 2001 Tier Two Plan, that's a new plan that you established in 2017. And that plan was obviously too new to experience any retirements. We have a five-year vesting period, so because it's only been existing two years, we don't expect any retirements in that plan for at least another three years at the very minimum. But is there a retirement projection? I think in the next slide, what we'll see is the two left charts, the legacy plan and Tier One, the ones that have retirements in green, and we're going to see that on a yearly basis over the last 10 years. So now that we look at this chart, what you're seeing in blue here is the number of retirements out of the legacy plan over the last 10 years on an annual basis. And in green, what you're seeing is the 2001 Tier One Membership retirements over the last 10 years on an annual basis. The key, I think the key thing that stands out here is the size of the bar charts in blue. Ultimately, what you're seeing is that the majority of the membership that has retired over the last 10 years has come out of the legacy plan. That's a really important point because that's what's been driving the costs. And, but more importantly, if you look at that red line, that really is a projection going forward, and we estimate that by 2029, most of the membership is going to come out of, or is going to retire out of the green bar, which is the 2001 Tier One Plan. Really important, that means that your costs are naturally going to gravitate towards a lower costing 2001 Tier One Plan.
Can you repeat that last line, that by 2029?
2029, the retirements out of the green bar, which is the 2001 Tier One Plan, are going to outweigh the retirements out of the, outweigh the retirements in the plan. So it's, the green bar is going to be bigger than the blue bar.
But by 2029, they're gone?
Wait.
The legacy plan.
Yes, the legacy plan.
So the blue bar is the legacy plan. They're going to shrink. They're going to retire out. So you're right. And the green bar is going to be growing. You're going to have more retirements out of the green bar. And so your costs are going to be driven by that, the cost of that green bar, which is a lower costing plan to FCPS.
Yes, the green bar.
Correct.
Okay. Keep going. Thank you.
All right. So now let's look at investment performance. How did we do? And in the next few slides, what you're going to see is investment performance as of June 30, 2018. The reason for that is for comparative purposes. Most plans don't publish their returns, their official returns, until the end of the calendar year. So looking at that, over the last year, ending that period, ERFC returned 8.1% after fees, which was better than 69% of our peers. But most importantly, because that's a short-term data point, most importantly for us, what we like to focus on is that 15-year number. And that 15-year number was seven and a half percent on average over the last 15 years after fees. That means we were, we were better than 87% of our peers. Now, how do we compare versus larger funds? You might be familiar with the CalSTRS Fund. It's the largest teachers' pension plan in the nation. So that's that blue bar on the left, and they returned 9% after fees. They had $225 billion in assets. That's important. They had over 1,000 staff, and they were 65 and a half percent funded. If we look at CalPERS, which is the next bar over, 8.6%, and they had 70.1 funded ratio. ERFC, sort of, as a good reference point, because it's really not our job to keep up with the bigger plans, but this is a good reference point that we kept up, 8.1%. And we were 75.7% funded. And then ultimately, the last bar, VRS, at seven and a half percent, and they were 74.5% funded. So the thing that stands out to me is the funded ratio, how we're actually in better shape than all three of those other plans. So how do we compare versus local funds? So again, you see in green ERFC, and in blue, you're seeing the three Fairfax County plans, the uniform system, keeping pace with ERFC at 8.1% after fees. And if you, if you take the weighted average of all three funds, their return was 7.4% with a funded ratio of 76.2, so only slightly higher than ERFC. So how does that really impact your funding and the plan as a whole? In this slide, what you're seeing is, if you, if I can just draw your attention to the blue bar charts, that's your unfunded liability. Another way to look at this is this is the mortgage that you owe for the promises that you've made for past and current employees. So why is the mortgage increasing? Because that's sort of the key question, I think, when you look at this. There's several reasons that could lead to that. I'll give you just a few. One could be driven by salary increases to employees. Your salaries go up, your mortgage payment goes up. Your population changes. If the population goes up, your mortgage goes up. And also remember that bar, the pie chart that I showed you early on, where most of the costs are paid for by investment, growth, and earnings. If the stock market has a bad year, because you're enjoying most of the costs being covered from there, that also impacts the mortgage payment. So the mortgage might go up. So those are the three main food groups, although there's many more. Now, if I could draw your attention to the green line, the funded ratio, a way to think of that green line is sort of an EKG for the plan, right? So we want to make sure that there's some movement, but not too much. And so importantly, you can see that the maximum that we've been at over the last 10 years is 77.7. It's only dropped to 74%. The key takeaway is that it's been very stable, which means that it's very easy for you to predict your costs on a go-forward basis. But how do we get to 100% funding? So in this slide, you're seeing that the movement to 100% funding is going to be gradual. As your costs for your newer plans come to fruition, I talked about 2001 Tier One Plan, and then the 2001 Tier Two Plan, as people from that plan start to retire as well, your normal cost of funding the plan will go down. And so your funded status will go up over time, and by 2040, we expect that your mortgage payment will be paid down and that you'll be 100% funded. But if you're still hung up on that 74% funded ratio, what does that mean? Because there's a lot of misinterpretation of that number. Some people think that we can only pay 74% of our members. That's completely incorrect. What that really means is that ERFC is sustainable in perpetuity. Why can we say that? It's because we have a 46-year track record of meeting our long-term assumptions. But most importantly, that there's a 46-year track record of the FCPS School Board funding benefit payments for their employees. So you've never missed a payment. And then lastly, I think this is also important, that the ERFC Board of Trustees is always looking for ways to increase their risk-adjusted returns and also reduce our costs in a prudent manner, obviously. So what about when we look at the contribution rates? And I mentioned early on that the contribution rates aren't going to change, they're going to stay flat through 2021. You're seeing that on the screen now in green is the cost to the employees. This is what comes out of their paycheck on a monthly basis, 3%. And then in blue, what you're seeing is the cost for FCPS. This is what comes out as a contribution to each employee on a monthly basis, 6.44%. And as you can see, that's staying the same through 2021. But I mentioned that we're improving costs, and how are we doing that? I think thanks in large part to the support of the ERFC Board of Trustees. Over the last year and a half, we've been able to enforce significant cost savings to the plan. Namely, we've saved over $10 million in net present value, incremental net present value savings over the next 10 years. If, just to get around the finances and to make this as simple as a conservative way of showing the numbers, if you take the aggregate over the next 10 years, that's really closer to $17 million in savings. How did we do that? Reduced consulting fees. We reduced investment manager fees. But I mentioned that we had a key initiative as well in raising awareness. That's our ambassador program. Some of you might be familiar with this. The ambassador program really recruits FCPS volunteers, and they distribute basic information on ERFC and really guide the members in our direction, really raises awareness of the benefits that we have here at FCPS. This initiative started in 2016 with 14 members. We're now up to 146, and we're all on our, well on our way to meeting a 200-member goal by 2020. That's one volunteer at every school location or FCPS location. So to recap, what I told you, I mentioned that the 2001 Tier One, Tier Two Plan is the only plan that's active and growing. All new members go into that plan, and it's your least expensive plan. In addition, the plan has performed very well, and our funded ratio remains stable. Where our costs are relatively low versus our peers, and we continue to raise awareness about ERFC. So with that, I'll open up for questions. What can I help clarify?
Great. Thank you very much. That was succinct, and I hope clear to everybody. So questions? I don't think we've, yes, Ms. Schultz?
Could we go to slide 14, please? So my question is fundamentally, what we see here are plans that are, you know, like 100 times our size as the comparison. So $225 billion, $354 billion, both out of California, and then VRS, $79.2 billion, and that, the comp to $2.4 billion. I'm not quite sure I get, where are peer-size, you know, funded plans? This doesn't, to me, look actually like a comparison. I mean, it's an interesting, you know, snapshot, but aren't there, you know, plans out there that are similarly sized and similarly funded, where we could get a better idea of the comp on return on investment?
And just to remind people, please get all your questions out first before we go to answer, is that those are your questions? Yeah? That's great. Yes? Okay, go ahead. Thanks.
Okay, that's a really good question. And you're right. It is sort of an interesting slide, and that's all it's meant to be, to give you an interesting reference point to the bigger plans. Now, if you go to slide 13, that's where you're seeing the comparisons to plans of our size, $1 to $5 billion. That's the first comparison that we come up with. Pardon me?
Any slide?
No.
No.
This one. So this is, as you can see here, if you read, if you read the front note, this is comparing us to 60 defined benefit plans between $1 to $5 billion in assets. That's our peer group. And within that peer group, we perform better than 69% of those funds on the one-year basis, and better than 87% of our peers on the 15-year basis.
But we don't have, there's no visual example of a sample of some of those peers? No? I mean, that's, that's a conglomerate, so that's a, and I don't, how many did you say are included in that? 60?
Sixty.
So that's 60 aggregated against our one. I'm just wondering, you know, are there some individual peers that we could see? Because that's averaged over 60. There may be some in that 60 that are substantially more than 7.5 or 8.1%. Am I correct?
You're correct. So there's, intrinsically, what you're seeing here, when we say better than 87% of our peers, we're saying that there's 13% of, basically, of those funds are actually going to do better, but we're better than 87% of the 60.
Okay.
And so...
I mean, fundamentally, on a statistical basis, there could be three or four really poorly performing plans that drive down the average of the 60. There could be 10 or 12 that are, or 15 or 20, that are very high performing, and when it's limped into the average, I can't see it. And so I'm wondering if there are a couple that are outlier, you know, very high performing that we should be taking a look at and should be, you know, those should be the bellwether as opposed to an aggregate of 60.
So can I just make sure I understand your question? So are you looking for the individual funds, a list of the funds? Is that what you're looking for?
Right. So, so the universe of the, it says, this is the asterisk, the universe of 60-defined pension funds, I'm wondering if there are a few out there that, you know, we could chase as really the goal setter instead of just a conglomerate of 60 where it averages down to 7.5?
And Ms. Schultz, it sounds to me like this is the next step question. Correct?
I think this is a crucial conversation. Unless, there's, I didn't see anybody else lined up for questions. This is really how we perform. This is the difference between an unfunded liability and improving our situation in the out years.
Right, which I understand.
It's 13% of the 13.
Right.
It's not 13% of the 60.
Okay. Well, yeah. And knowing, knowing that we don't have the data right here at the table, I think that sounds to me like you like more information.
Is it 13%? Is the number of funds or 13% of money?
So we're better than 30, so 87%. So out of the 60, if you take that as a percentage, there's 13% that are doing better.
Eight months.
So there's only eight. So it would, it would seem that I can provide a list as a follow-up item of all the funds, if that helps.
Yes, that's, that's what I'm hearing.
And their performance.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin.
So if you can go to slide 15, this is one I was thinking of. So I, Ms. Schultz, you know, you and I very much share the desire for FCPS to always look for ways to continuously improve. But I did think it was important for this slide because it would be nice that we have the information at the bottom, those three statistical points across the bar, because it, at the top, it's certainly wonderful to see that when you compare us against our local funds, that we're performing at the top of our local funds. But what we don't know is the comparison of size. So that, that is the next step for me, is I want to see, yes, as, so the next step would be having the three data points across the three bars that don't have it, and then also what percentage rate are they funded at? You know, you mentioned that we're hovering somewhere on 74 to 77 funding.
Yes, so for this period, 75.7.
Yep.
Versus their weighted return, weighted funded of 76.2. So I understand what you're saying. You would want to see the, on an individual basis, all those metrics. We can do that on a go-forward basis for you.
I think it's really important, and thank you, because understandably, Fairfax County school employees, as well as Fairfax County government employees, do place a value on the defined benefit, but there's been questions raised by the public in terms of how well are we performing? And because in the end, everything, obviously, that we do to put in there is, is trying to make sure that we're achieving the maximum outcome to help our employees, but it is based on public tax dollars. So being able to show that Fairfax County's ERFC, the school system's ERFC, is, is performing as well, if not better. And then I also think it, it is being able to see, to Ms. Schultz's prior question, if there are eight funds that, over the last 15 years, have performed at a stronger rate than we have, we can always look to see what did they do differently that will help us continuously improve for EFC in general.
Okay, so I see a clarifying of next steps, and that's fine. Great. We have Karen Keys-Gamar, Illyon Moon, Dahlia Palchak in line. Okay, and Karen Corbin-Sanders, okay. So Karen Keys-Gamar is next?
I think, okay.
Okay. And Tom Wilson is also on the list. Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to go back to some basics. On slide seven, you went through an explanation of how we started, and then you said five, then we added another five years you needed to work. And then on this chart, it says 46 years. Can you tell me? I, I'm sorry, I need you to go over that. And so you want me to go through all my questions at one time? Okay, so that's the first question. Then on page, I'm sorry, slide number nine, we're saying that our investments, strategies have been working very well. I'm wondering how we, that currently our employees are paying about 3% of their paycheck. I'm wondering how we're looking at what the worst-case scenario would be, because it appears to me that we're relying heavily on these investments. And you said if we have problems with the stock market, we could have this problem or that problem. So I don't know if you can give us an explanation as to, are we planning for that? I'm sure we are, but I'd like to get an explanation of what the worst-case scenario could be and how we're addressing that and preparing our employees for that. And then I think I had one other question with respect to retirement preparedness on slide number eight. It says, you mentioned, you used the phrase, "Without proper savings, they could take a 20% pay cut." And I'm wondering how we're preparing our employees for understanding and managing their expectations from what this, the current plan is. Those are my three questions for now.
Thank you for getting all three out. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so let me just take your questions in order, all good questions. So starting on slide seven, with the 46 years, that's really in reference to how long we've been in history. So if you, in basic, 1973 to today, 46 years. we've been in history, so if you, in basic, 1973 to today, 46 years. Does that, okay. And then slide nine, the question, I believe, was the reliance on the stock market?
Before you move from that, so, but you did have a, they had to work five years, and then another five years, we made some adjustments. Are we still in that? Can you clarify what you were talking about? And then, I want to make sure I understand how long people who are in the latest plan, how long they need to be able to be employed to vest in this, in that plan.
Okay.
Okay.
So, two ques, two topics there that you sort of hinted at. One was how long they have to work, and the other one is vesting, different, completely different. So, I'll try to separate them, so it's not as confusing. So, the difference between the tier one and the tier two, the tier one, if, in order to reach full retirement service credit, you're having to work 30 years of service, and you can retire at any age. That's tier one. Tier two is the rule of 90, which is the service that an employee works plus their age has to equal 90. So, how long they have to work really depends, right? So, it depends, when they come into the system, all that, all that sort of, so it, it really, it depends. And then the second question was about vesting. That's also very different. Both plans have different vesting structures. They're both five years. However, in the tier one plan, we're looking at a 60-year, a 60-year, 60 years of age, you can retire with five years of service credit. In the tier two, you're looking at reaching social security age plus five years. So, there's a big difference there, right? So, social security age is currently 67 versus the, the prior plan at 60. Does that answer?
The other question had to do with the worst-case scenario based, we've had to deal with the ups and downs, because I, I've heard in the community, "Well, maybe we need to scrap ERFC altogether because we can't depend on this." I don't agree with that, but I do want to talk about, you know, it looks like 188 million comes from investment growth and earnings. So, how are we planning for a worst-case, say we have another recession?
Right, that's a really good question, a question that comes up a lot. And one of the benefits that you've sort of enjoyed over the last years is, you know, the members, the employees of FCPS have been able to fund, get access to a benefit that otherwise would cost them six times as much money on their own to fund, number one. The other part is that you, as an, as employer, are able to fund this benefit at one-third the cost because of being invested in the stock market. And so, how we're planning for a downfall is we continue to be diversified. We work with the best consultants in the industry, we work with the best money managers in the industry, and we diversify our portfolio, and we have, look, the stock market is going to do what the stock market's going to do, no matter who you are. However, the best thing you can do is diversify prudently and make sure that your portfolio is sort of spread out, and not all your eggs are in one basket, so to speak, right? And then you had another question, I don't want to, I want to make sure I address, the last one was on slide eight, right? On savings and education is, was what I heard. Okay, so, so we've, the ambassador program is one of the ways that we're, we're sort of pushing to educate our, our employees, raising awareness. When we look at self-directed plans, I think that FCPS in their relations with, with the defined contribution plans has done a great job in setting up mechanisms where they have, employees have access to defined contribution experts as well. So, I believe, you know, experts here from the leadership team could probably speak to that as well, even more than I could.
I think my concern was, you mentioned, if they don't save enough, it could equal a 20% pay cut, and they wouldn't be prepared. So, I think that's where my question was going to.
Right, Ms. Keys-Gamar, Mr. Martinez was saying companies or organizations that do self-directed face this challenge. Our defined benefit doesn't have this challenge. Our folks actually, in many cases, are able to, through, you know, having the benefit of VRS and ERFC, and the additional benefit of doing some 403Bs, can maintain their standard of living after retirement similar to what it was when they were working. Am I mischaracterizing that?
No, I think you're spot on.
Thank you very much. Next is Karen Corbett Sanders.
Great, thank you. And I've been on the board now almost four years, and this is by far the clearest ERFC presentation I've seen. So, I'm impressed. And I'm also relieved to see the level in which we are funded. Ideally, we would be 100% funded, but I don't know of any plans that are 100% funded in the public sector are, do you know of any?
You can count them on one hand.
Okay. So, now to go to my specifics. On page 13, following up on Ms. Schultz's question, I know that Montgomery County Public Schools has an equivalent to an ERFC. If you would give us an idea of where we fall compared to, in comparison to them, because people like to compare us to Mount Vernon, to Montgomery County, it's always good to know where we are. Then on page 15, you have the Fairfax County Uniformed Retirement System at 8.1% and the police officers at 7.0%. Is the uniformed retirement system a combination of both the police officers and the firefighters, or is that something different? Then we get to page 17, where we talk about fully funded by 2040. Would like to better understand how you see us being fully funded by 2040, and does that include, what are our assumptions for contributions by employees and employers in that area? That would be very helpful to understand. And my last question is on page 21. You have 10.4 in net present value of our savings, but then you mentioned 17 million over the 10-year plan, or the 10-year period. And I think for transparency, we should probably have that in one of those little eye-test footnotes at the bottom, that it actually says the 17 million, just so people know what we're talking about.
Okay, let me start at the top. And I believe your first question was comparisons between Montgomery County and ERFC. So, that's something we can come back to you with.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, so...
So, that'll be a next step.
And the next was on slide 15, which was, is the uniformed system and the police officers one and the same?
Is the uniformed system umbrella and the police officers as a subset?
To my knowledge, and looking at their caffers, they report separately.
So, if we could better understand who falls into that uniformed, then?
And, sure, we can come back to you with that information. The next question was on, on the funding. How do we, if I got this right, how do we expect to get to 2040 and pay off that mortgage payment? What are our assumptions, employee and employer? So, currently, our employee contributions are set at 3%, and those are slated to stay the same through the end of fiscal year 2021. And the same goes for the employer contribution, which is 6.44%, and that's also going to stay the same through fiscal year 2021.
But you have 19 years past that, that's what I'm looking at.
So, in, in terms of how would, the assumptions that go into that, so that's built on the fact that if we reach our, on average, 7 and 1/4%, which is our assumed rate of return, which we've exceeded over the last 15 years, then our mortgage payment would be paid off by 2040.
So, the assumption is still to maintain 3% and 6.44% then?
That has, doesn't have a bearing on, on 2040, although if it changes, your unfunded liability either grows, and maybe the, the payment to, to the system changes, so that we can actually hit that mortgage payment. So, that does have an impact on your payment, but not necessarily on, on when the mortgage is going to be paid off.
So, if I could have, as a next step, a clear, clarification of what the assumptions are to go into 100% by 2040, because I appreciate that you've made a commitment of no increase for fiscal year 20, through 21. I'm looking beyond 21, you're looking beyond 21 with 19 years, so there had to be some assumptions that go into it.
Yeah, and, and if you're looking for, just to make sure that we're on the same page, if you're looking for a projection of what your contribution rates are going to be going forward, that's not going to be possible, because it depends. So, you'd have to tell me what actions the school board would take in the next 17 years, which impact that. Are you going to increase salaries? Are you going to change staffing levels? All these things sort of factor in this. So, I only have part of the equation. So, if you know that, maybe we can give something to the actuaries to give you a solid number, but barring that, we probably couldn't.
But, but I do think, if I hear correctly, Ms. Corbett Sanders, you're trying to figure out how we get to that 100% by 2040, which is really the, based on the rate of return that we forecast. And so, we can click, I can work with, as a trustee, I can work with Mr. Martinez and staff to help clarify that.
Correct, because what we're looking for is the assumptions that go into a fully funded by 2040. And if the assumptions are that we have an average increase over year over year of number of, in salaries, and we have an expectation of this percentage of our workforce retiring year over year, and then we also add in that a flat contribution fee, contribution rate by the employee and by the, the employer, coupled with an expectation of 7.25 return on investment annually, then come, and you compound that out to 2040, and you get to 100%, then I just need to know those individual assumptions.
So, I'm hearing another next step.
Yes, and we can clarify funded status versus unfunded liabilities.
Right, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Next, next we have Mr. Moon, then Ms. Palchak, then Mr. Wilson.
There is one more question to...
Sure.
Yeah, that's you, I think...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, on page 21.
On the net present value. And just to underscore, this is a conservative way of showing the 17 million, so that's taking into account the time value of money. But I think your point was, do we want a footnote? The calculation is on the bottom, the 17 million dollars, it sounds like it's important, so we can also add that on, on a go-forward basis.
I'm just considered, concerned you're underselling yourself.
I appreciate that.
Okay, so I guess that, that is, that is the next step that has been accepted. Go ahead to do that. All right, Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Mrs. France. Thank you for the presentation. I echo Chairman Corbett Sanders in asking for a assumption she had made, because those assumptions had, have been made for you to make a presentation about 100% funding by 2040, and it will be a very, a huge benefit for the board members to know what assumption you're making, including obviously, obviously, you know, salary levels of our employees, whether you're making certain percentages increase, et cetera. With all those assumptions that you will be providing to us, I'm going to ask, in addition to that, I'm going to ask you a couple more, couple more questions and information. If you could, right now, or in writing in the future, let us know the benefits and downsides of 76% funding level versus 100% funding. Why, if, if we want to go to 100%, why do you want to go to 100%? There had to be a, a lot of benefits over, you know, downsides for us wanting to go to 100% versus current level of 76%, if that is what the board wants to do. So, I want to know benefits and downsides, 76% versus 100%. And also, with assumptions you have made, that's going to be provided to us, I also want you, if possible, I want you to tell us, if the board wants to go to 100% funding by 2030...
Okay, so these are...
What the board would need to do to get the full funding by 2030? And conversely, if the board wants to delay that to 2050, then what the board would need to do to delay that to 2050? I just want to see what sort of actions the future boards will have to make to get to 2040, or 2030, or even beyond 2040.
Okay, so, Mr. Moon, I, these are all next steps?
All next steps.
Yes, and I don't know if Mr. Martinez wants to respond briefly to this, or just say, "Sure, I'll do it."
No, absolutely. I think we'll just come back with that information.
Thank you. And are they doable? Would you be able to provide those information?
I think to the extent that it's not, we'll let you know. We have to work with our actuary. But at this point, I'm thinking that, you know, your assumptions, your request on assumptions, that's very doable. Talking about the upside and the downside, the benefits of being 100% funded versus 76, that's pretty doable. I think where the caveat is, is maybe some of the projections that you mentioned at the end, that we have to get back to you on.
Okay, thank you.
Right, great, thank you very much. Next, we have Ms. Palchak, and then it'll be Mr. Wilson, and then some callbacks.
Thank you, and thank you again, Mr. Martinez. Nice to see you again this year. And my main question actually was pretty much exactly what Ms. Corbett Sanders asked, so, you know, getting more specifics into the future assumptions and projections, and, you know, I assume you'll be looking at if we continue in the current vein of how we've been funding employee salaries in the past, you know, four years, there's been a change versus other possibilities, because hopefully it will help inform future boards as they move forward. My other questions were simply, I was very excited to hear that on slide 21, you've been able to reduce consultant investment fees. I know this was a conversation we've had in the past several years. And for that, I don't know if you're able to give us a little bit more information as to, you know, decisions that were made, and any, you know, future, you know, considerations you're taking into account for our, us laypeople. Help us understand what decisions are made by your board on that. And then finally, for slide, let me see, I have slide number eight. And I know one of my colleagues asked this question, and just because it may be a little confusing, I really appreciate the fact that here you're sharing, not, this is not our plan on there, but this is, would be a not, you know, self-directed versus ours with, which is the defined benefit plan. So, I'm wondering if it's easy to compare, to add the information of what it means to be on our plan for our employees, so we're able to kind of compare apples to apples, and to have that visual for, for the importance of having the defined benefit plan. And I think I better understand, I guess it was a little bit confusing when we talk about a mortgage, whereas, you know, that, that's generally more of a fixed amount, and here, it's a little bit fixed, but a little bit, it changes, right? Well, we have employees coming in, employees going out, and there are some more, more variables. So, for those of us who do not have degrees in this field, and want to be able to share this with the public, I think the questions that have been asked will get us to better understand that percentage of funding, and really what the plan is, and the different, different ways that we could reach the full funding in the different timeframes that were shared. So, I, I second that. And I guess my, actually, sorry, I had one more question, which is something that, that may come up, and I don't know if you're able to have this on slide 19. If you're able to share, I guess over the 40, 43-year history, or where you can, kind of the history of, and the benefits and decisions or drawbacks made from employee versus employer contribution rates. So, I know you've been here for two years, and I guess people might ask, "Oh, why, you know, why is it 3% and 6.44%?" And just to be able to explain how those decisions were made. And you're saying this is through 2021. So, I don't know if you remember what year, how long ago this, this began, and, and kind of your recommendations, or why this was done.
So, I think I got everything. I just want clarification on the last one, just to make sure that we get the right information back to you.
Yeah.
It's, I, I thought I heard you wanted sort of the historical of where the contribution rate has been. I don't know how, and I think the part where I need clarity on is how far back do you want to go? Because I think it gets a little difficult, right? So, there's only, only so much history that you can dig up. And then the other part that I would, I would sort of mention is that the contribution rates for the employee are 100% controlled by this governing body. So, to the extent that that information is available to us, then obviously we'll bring it back to you.
Okay.
Okay.
That would be helpful.
Okay, any other comments, or we leave this for, for the next steps?
Sorry, and slide, slide eight, is that feasible to be able to kind of compare our plan versus the one that's not ours, the self-directed being shown here?
I think we're going to have to come back to you on that. I have to talk to our actuaries, make sure that we can actually do that. And I think what you're looking for, if I understood you on that, is what would FCPS look like with just a, a defined contribution plan versus what we have now, where we have the benefit of access to defined contribution plan? the benefit of access to defined contribution plans plus the security of the defined benefit plans and DRS and ERFC? Is that what you're looking for?
Right, because here you are showing the self-directed, which is not what we have, correct? And so, and I assume as you're going out to employees and trying to, you know, explain the benefits of the plan, you might have a version of this already of what it means to be part of the...
Sure.
Of our plan? So I don't know if there's, if there's a way to do that.
So that's a, okay, a next step, and we'll take a look when we get to next steps and make sure that everybody's clear on what we're asking. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. It was a very helpful presentation. A number of points have already been mentioned, just, and I want to just add my sentiments to those. I also would like to see the contribution rates for employer employees over time, how those have changed. And I think maybe 2001 might be the good starting point, since there was a significant change in the plan. I also, there was a comment raised about the pros and cons of changing the funded from 74% up to 100. I guess my question would be slightly different. If we're pursuing 100%, why are we happy with 74% now? But I think Mr. Moon's question is appropriate as well. And then finally, on slide 17, I also look forward to seeing a little more information about those assumptions. Okay, so in addition to those, on slide 12, what's the change in time, over time, of the number of retirees in the pool of benefit recipients? I'd like to see something that shows that number more clearly. I'd also like to have you just talk a little bit, maybe after I'm done with my questions, about why, why should the public? I mean, we've got an $868 million unfunded liability on slide 16, that's increased by 100 million over last year. Talk a little bit about how the public should be comfortable with that, with that change in amount, that seems very significant to me. And then finally, on slide 25, you haven't talked about, and you only just mentioned it at the end of your presentation, about the importance of increased awareness. Could you just talk a little bit more about why that's an important factor as well?
Just to make sure I got all your questions. And the one I think I need the most clarity on is the one on slide 11, where you're talking about the projections. It sounded to me like you were asking for maybe the history of the membership changes? Is that what? Is this slide 12 on yours? It's the one with the annual retirement by plan?
Yeah, annual retirement, so, 29, I guess that...
So that last question is a good question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I realize I didn't have my microphone on, but normally people would show me, tell me. But just to be clear, just to be clear, just to make sure, you had asked about the number of people in the pool. I'd like to see the number of retirees into the pool over time and the change, so that we can see sort of what's the projection of growth of the number of retirees. And also, if you could talk a little bit about what happens if we have a reduction in the overall number of employees contributing annually into the future, given that that's at least a possibility.
Okay, so that last point, it really sounds like there's some education on actuarial functionality that we can bring back to this board. I hope you're prepared for a very dry conversation, but we're going to bring it to you. And so we'll bring you all those, all those points. I think you had an interesting question about how the public should be comfortable. I'm not really going to speak about the comfort of the public. I think we're always looking to reach 100% funding, and that's our goal. And through some of the things that we've done, not only over the last year and a half, but what the ERFC Board of Trustees has done on a continuous basis in funding and helping fund the plan and diversify the plan and making sure that over the long term we reach our assumed rate of return, I think that's very helpful and actually enables us to actually reach 100% funded by 2040. And we'll bring back all the assumptions that go into that as well, for your benefit.
Okay, Mr. Wilson? Got it? All right, thank you very much. Then we have two go-banks, Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Schultz. Ms. McLaughlin?
Great. I guess first of all, one of the things that I believe is so important, because obviously our board is not investment fund experts, so our job is to try and do the benchmarking and understand it in context. So when we go to the slide where it was showing our funding, the 74 to 77 range, I think that is slide 16. So if you look at slide 16, those numbers of the funding ratio, when I was looking at the comparison of where we were against the other Fairfax County defined contribution plans, they also looked like they were, and were waiting to get that data. But it looked like the barometer was of funding somewhere in that 75% range. So I guess my question would be, yes, we want to get to 100% funding, but what are the funding ratios that these types of defined contribution plans in both the DC metro area, the Virginia retirement system, and then maybe the best practice model, what is it at? I mean, if 100% sounds nice and 100% is ideal, what's really the landscape and the reality? So that would be the piece that I think we really need to understand, because I know we want to direct Fairfax County dollars and resources to the classroom for our students and our teachers and our employees as a whole, as an operating system. And so the cost of going to 100%, I think we're going to definitely need to understand, is that what everybody's doing and directing in their funds? Because it will certainly come at a cost of what else we can fund, based on the fact that this school system every year finds an accounting. Mr. Moon asked for that, Ms. Corbett Sanders. I'm asking something different, which is, it's not just Mr. Moon saying, what would the cost be? I want the benchmarking of not just cost, is that the most, is that the standard practice that everybody's doing and now we have to be doing it? Or is it just, we like the idea of going to 100% and we like going to it as soon as possible? But what are the other funds doing based on a best practice model and the fact that we are a nonprofit, you know, funded through tax dollars agency? And by the way, we get our money from the board supervisors. So I would say to my colleagues, I would think it'd be very important that we have a shared conversation with the board supervisors on a going-forward basis for this, to again tie the two of them together more effectively. And then finally, my other question was, had to do with, in the appendices, basically there was slide 29 and slide 30, they're there, but again, I, what I guess I would like is, I don't know that time permits now, but as a next step, I would like some narrative to that, to both of those charts, 29 and 30.
Okay, so these appear to be next step questions, and I guess are there any...
Yes, that's what I was saying. I said, there's not time to answer it now.
Right. And so for Mr. Martinez, did you need any further clarification, or are we...
No, I think I got it. We can come back with that.
Sure.
Fairly straightforward, thank you.
Okay, great, all right. Thank you very much. Ms. Schultz?
Just going back to slide 17, which appears to be like, you know, the most awarded questioned slide. Is it typical to do this kind of a projection on a quote-unquote "fully funding," you know, the mortgage, if you will, without the understanding of the number of employees? You know, one of the things you talked about earlier, you know, there are things that cause a potential increase in the future. Salary increases, number of employees. Without understanding what the projection would be for the next, you know, 20 years for the number of employees, how could we even, like, how does that actually even wind up as a slide, I guess I'm asking?
So it is extremely normal for pension plans, especially in the public sector, to project when their mortgage payment is going to be paid. And I think part of it is to help the plan sponsors know when that's going to happen. Now, some of the variables, again, we're going to come back with the assumptions, so you're going to get visibility on that? And I don't know if I missed anything else in your question?
No, the only other thing was, at one point you said, and I want to make sure I heard what you said, that the 3% contribution, whether or not the employees actually maintain that 3% is not a part of the equation? How could that not be a part of the equation?
So if I said that I stand corrected, what that mean, what I really meant to say is that we ERFC do not control that part of the equation. So that's something that's, the school board controls, you control what that contribution rate for the employees is.
Okay. But the 3, the 3% and the 6, whatever, 6.4%, that's, we know that's an assumption that's built in, that that's basically maintained to get to that 100%, or we don't know that either?
No, so we'll come back with those assumptions?
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Schultz? Yeah? Thank you. Okay, I have Ms. Corbett Sanders and Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, and I'll be very brief. We were talking about assumptions, and Mr. Wilson also wanted a timeline of going back to 2001, and I thought page 16 is something that we might want to add clarity to. In 19, in 2009, we had a funded ratio of 75.6%, but we had an unfunded liability, which was substantially smaller. It would be helpful if we actually had the data which showed the number of employees and the salary burden for the system in 2009 versus where we are at 2018. Because 2009, we were really in the depths of a pretty ugly, they call it the Great Recession. And so we did cut back on employees, we did have salaries that were flat, and so we've been kind of digging our way out of it since then. But it would be helpful if we could have that timeline show why that unfunded liability has grown over time based on addressing number of employees and salaries. Does that make sense?
Sure, we can give you the key underlying metrics, because there's a lot, I mentioned there's a lot of things that go into...
Right.
Feed into unfunded liability, so this can turn into an all-day event?
No, I don't need an all-day event. All I, I don't even need an event, I just want to have this data, because I'm pretty good at reading numbers. The second piece of it is, we talk about the objective of getting to 100%. We show our funded ratio over time. Do you have similar data for the county investment funds?
We don't have that. What we can get is anything that's available in the public domain, and so we might be able to get our hands on that.
Yeah. I would, I think it would be helpful if the superintendent asked the county executive for similar numbers for the county funds, because it will show where the investments are being made.
Okay, so that's, is the next step to...
Yes, please.
...the superintendent ask the county? So you guys are off the hook on that one? Okay.
Because I don't think you can ask him, but he can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, and then we will review next steps.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just staying on this slide, because my question relates to this as well. So here, here we see from 2009 to 2018, an increase of about $300 million in unfunded liability over that time period. I'd like to also see, so right now, 868 million is a little, well, maybe very close to one third of the operating budget of the school system. I'd like to see that ratio over time as well. So the unfunded liability versus what was the operating budget for that year? And that should be a number that's pretty easily accessible, so if we could just see that over time. Because what I'm worried about is that that unfunded liability is consuming a potentially even larger share of our annual operating budget, just in terms of raw numbers. It's just a way to, to sort of get the scale of what's happening in our system, because I do see, I'm a little bit alarmed by the trend, you know, from 2014 to 2018, of $250 million of additional unfunded liability.
Okay, so this again is a clarification of a next step. And do you have any questions? Is that kind of clear?
So we can work with leadership staff to get that information, because obviously it, it takes into account information from both sides. But just to be clear, that the unfunded liability is not what you're actually paying ERFC on an annual basis. So as long as we understand that.
Sure. Great, all right. So I think we've covered it. Thank you very much. Could we see next steps? It's lost in a plug. Okay, and this numbering is the, is the overall numbering in board docs, is that correct? In other words, we don't really have 37 separate next steps for this work session?
One, two, three.
That's, okay. Okay. All right, so we actually have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine next steps out of this.
Now we have...
Okay. Okay, so we know what the universe is. Okay. All right, so if board members, we will, I'm going to quickly go through and see if these are clear. The first one, provide information from slide 18 for funds comparable size to FCPS. Ms. Schultz, okay?
Just as long as it's not just generic information, I'm actually looking for, you know...
Specific.
The size of the fund, the funding.
Okay. Okay, all right. I think we did talk about that.
Can we just, I would feel better if that's the detailed information.
Okay, provide detailed information. Okay, I think Mr. Martinez, because we discussed this one quite a few times, I think, okay? All right, everybody is okay with that? I'm going to look for a nod of heads, because we talk a lot about that. Okay, the next one, provide the three data points across the three bars that don't have it, and what percentage rate are they funded on? So this is slide 15. All right?
Yeah, I already read through mine.
Okay. Okay, and Mr. Martinez, as we're going through this, make sure that you are straight as well as to what we're being asked for, okay? And if you don't need more clarification, please let us know. Okay? Is everybody all right? The next, what are the funding ratios of defined contribution plans in the region? And Ms. McLaughlin, by region, you're defining what is region?
The WABE, the WABE.
The WABE guides, so Montgomery County, Arlington, so let's say WABE region. Thank you.
WABE schools.
Okay. All right, so that gives us the, the DC metro area. Okay, thank you. All right, I don't see any huge discomfort with that. Provide narrative to slide 29 and 30. And again, are we clear, Mr. Martinez, as to what narrative we're talking about? Did you take notes on that?
I think the question was just narrative, so I imagine it would be speaking to it as if, as if I would have addressed it here in the meeting, and that's my takeaway. So if that's not the case, then maybe further direction. So if that's not the case, then maybe further direction would be needed.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin, are you okay with that? Is that okay? Okay, thank you. All right, the next is compare info on slide 15 to Montgomery County's plan. That's kind of, that's, Ms. Corbett Sanders, I think we've kind of, I'm assuming that that also coincides with the other issues on the WABE guide, so is that right?
We've added the WABE guide piece. I mean, this had predated that, it was just really trying to
So should we just take that one off?
So, what you could do is, in the WABE region, and then just say, in particular, MCPs.
Or especially.
Or, yeah.
We always
Do you want to still reference slide 15?
It should be on slide 15, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think that's
And then you can get rid of that one.
Okay. All right? So you're okay with that? All right, thank you. And the next is clarify who falls into the uniform and services category, that's off of the
For Fairfax County.
For Fairfax County. Let's add that in uniform services category in Fairfax County. So is that accurate?
Correct.
Anybody okay with that one? Okay, thank you. The next is clarify the assumptions that go into 100% by 2040 on slide 17, and then we had several other
Sorry, can I just ask a question about that previous one? If you could just slide back up a little bit. So are you asking for that in compares, like, getting that information in order to do what?
So there are two separate categories there. There's the uniform services, which has a rate of return of 8.1%, and then there's the police officers, which is seven. So it seemed to me that uniformed services includes both police and firefighters. And so I'm just trying to understand, what are we comparing apples to apples, or what? Because if the uniform services is a category that only includes, you know, 100 people...
Okay, just for us, so when I go back and read next steps, sometimes I wonder why we've asked something. So if we could add to that in order to clarify the comparison of the
That's fine.
Return rate. Because if I go back and read, I'm like, why did we ask that? And so if we explain why we're asking, sometimes I think that helps.
So it's in order to compare
Rate of return.
Okay, all right.
And scope, the size of, the size of the pot.
Rate of return and scope. Okay? Did that help? Thank you, okay. The number 42, we have a bunch of questions that kind of relate to the same thing, and I can't see this very well, so you all can help me if we need to combine some. This is clarify the assumptions that go into the 100%. Mr. Moon had asked that, Ms. Corbett Sanders had asked that.
Mr. Wilson and Ms. McLaughlin.
Yes.
So if we take all of them and bring them into
Yeah.
Provide more details on the assumptions made, the assumptions and benefits of
And the benefit.
Yeah, the benefit of
The value add of us doing this.
Okay.
Pros and cons, I think it's
Yeah, I was going to say, let's do pros and cons.
That's fine.
Right.
So replace the word benefit to pros-cons.
Mr. McElveen?
So we have another number of things up here that hint at
Yes.
Changing the presentation, and given that ERFC is an independent organization with its own Board of Trustees, I don't think it's in our position to ask them to change their presentation. We can certainly ask for more
Well, we're asking for questions. No, 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 no.
No, we're providing details.
Well, if, no, if you look at, look down there, it says adding footnotes to slides and things like that.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Well, except for the fact that this is a presentation to the Fairfax County School Board, and will be available to people who are looking at what the Fairfax County School Board is looking at, we do need to have clarification on slides to make sure that there is no misrepresentation or misunderstanding.
Okay, well, I disagree with that.
Okay.
We'll be on record as saying we asked for it.
Okay, all right. So the next one is another footnote question. Other than Mr. McElveen, does anybody else have any difficulty with that?
You can always say no.
Okay, all right. The next is benefits.
Forty-four and forty-five maybe should go up.
Yes, I was going to say 44 and 45 really need to be subsumed into the rest of the questions about
Forty-two.
Forty-two, so, again, I can't
Well, you could just put the footnote question lower. Actually, Gillian's question
Okay.
You know, 40
Okay, so I think, can we just say that these are all questions regarding the 100% rather than trying to wordsmith this, which is not, okay?
His questions are definitely
All right. So, all right, I think we can figure out, that Mr. Martinez and his folks can figure this one out.
Put it in a bucket.
Okay, it'll all be in a bucket.
Just move 43 down.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, just move 43 down, and then they're together.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Okay, benefits and downsides of 76% funding level versus, these are, again, sort of clarifying questions on the whole issue of 100% funding. All right, is everybody okay? The next is, what would board need to do to get to full funding by '23? Again, this is kind of that whole bucket of funding, when, how, and how that would work, okay?
Forty-nine needs to go
And 49 needs to go up, so we can kind of put that up a little closer. It's the same bucket. Okay, thank you. All right, so Mr. Wilson, you're okay with that? And then the next is add footnote on slide 21 on net present value, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Okay? And then, Ms. Polchek, compare our plan to self-directed plans on slide eight. Is there any more clarification? That's sort of a big question, research project. Can we have a little better clarification on that?
Well, I think the question was if currently there's something that's being used to our employees to understand the benefits, that's helpful. Two is, I guess, I understand we have three different plans, but as we're trying to show, I mean, I would leave it up to you if there's an easy way to do this.
Okay, you're right, you're not looking for a white paper, but rather, what, perhaps the marketing, what we use to help our employees understand the benefits of ERFC, is that as opposed to
And as we recruit and retain, correct.
Is that clear?
By the way, I like it when you say, leave things up to me. So, thank you.
Okay, all right. So now that we're not asking for new research to be vetted by some university, okay. All right, the next is show the number of recipients projected over time in the pool on slide 12. Okay, Mr. Wilson, is that clear?
Yeah, I think that's clear enough. I mean, I had talked about showing change over time, but that's
Okay. The next is show what would happen if there was a decrease in number of participants in pool. This is sort of, you know, again, sort of the
Yeah, this does, this does go to assumptions and of sort of hitting that fully funded number, so if you could just address that
Right. And Ms. Corbett Sanders, next is also sort of a background issue of clarifying the 29 versus the 2018 in slide, you know, sort of the
The underlying
That's right, the underlying metrics, and those are just numbers. It just gives depth to the explanation of that slide, okay? Not new research, it's data that's already in. And the last is superintendent
Well, the reason we need that is because they, you don't want people in the public reading this slide and saying, oh my gosh, it's increased by X amount of hundreds of millions of dollars.
Questions, wow.
And not understand, we've increased the number of our employees, and we've increased the salaries of those employees
That's right.
So that we can attract and retain the best and brightest.
But basically provides more context
Correct.
To that slide, whatever number that is. Okay, so we got that? Thank you. And then the last is asking the superintendent to ask the county executive for similar numbers for county slides for slide, I can't read that, whatever that is, 16, okay? All right, so are we all, oh, one more. Unfunded liabilities versus annual budget over time, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, and this one, I actually, since you pointed out, this does have, asks for information that you don't readily have, really could be the superintendent could show that, because we're going, he, we, you provide the unfunded liability numbers to us annually, superintendent has the budget, actual operating budget numbers, so it doesn't necessarily have to fall on you.
Okay, because it's up to the, the school board determines through its budget what the contribution rates are going to be.
Well, it's, no, it has not to do with the contribution rate, it has to do with annually what our unfunded liability is.
Yeah, we can choose to do something else if we want.
I'll work with Mr. Martinez to get the information.
Okay, so that we've got that, okay. All right, all right, so, all right, so I think we're all, we've answered all the questions. Thank you again, it was a very informative, and it's a good news report, which is nice.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate that.
Pleasure, thank you.
Great, thank you. So this portion of this works